Back from recess. Fair? Okay, back from recess. The next account, right, we'll just now finish off the category twos. I believe we have seven. Next one, Department one ninety, data processing. For purposes of discussion, I will make a motion that we accept the Board of Selectmen's recommendation to fund that account in a total amount of three hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So the cost drivers are salaries and contracted services, which are licensing fees.
Yes.
Can you tell us what we spent in two thousand and nineteen on contracted services?
One hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Make a motion that we cut five thousand from line for one.
Second.
Discussion.
So what was, oh, okay. Oh, okay. No, I just wanted to say that the reason I said it is that they spent less than they asked for last year, so.
And are the licensing fees and all that kind of stuff the same? That's the only thing that might cause it to go up, right?
Can I just, I should have added this, twenty eighteen, they spent one eighty-six.
Okay.
So I'm still fine with my five thousand.
Yeah, I'm just, but they were over that year by twenty-five, the next year they're under fourteen. We try not to buy equipment unless we absolutely need it.
Well, there, this is for contracted services and salaries. That's what costs, the dry, the cost driver.
Uh, equipment bought is also bought at a contracted services in this account, it's not broken out.
There's work, uh, workstations and hardware updates, twenty-two thousand dollars.
Uh, top of the one seventy-one, is that what you're saying, Brian?
So their worst year was one eighty-six, right?
Yes.
So, so maybe I should amend my motion to cut seventy-five hundred after that account.
Okay, I'll second that.
I, I, I'd like to hear the rationale to go to the two oh five.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you look at the, the computer and go to the left-hand side with the little arrow, all the details are in there. You got tax and assessor software, forty thousand two ninety-six, licensing software fees, eighty-four thousand one twenty-two. The workstations and hardware, twenty-two thousand, management services, seventy-six hundred. Software and maintenance, twenty-six thousand one eleven. Website and public information, that's, um, um, that's twenty-six hundred dollars. And lease maintenance, P O maintenance, postage meter, sorter and operator, twenty-two thousand six hundred.
But, Bob K, if they had it broken down like this last year, the point is that they spent less than they asked for, so, you know, I mean, you can read that to us, but.
We, we might have just did, like Brad had said, we might have cut back on the workstations and hardware.
Well, we don't, we don't buy unless we need it.
Need the, the service.
Well, that's a good, good policy.
But, but now, that's, I would caution against.
Go ahead.
I would caution against punishing the department for not backfilling their budget.
Doing it.
I think, but I think increasing the budget by five thousand isn't a punishment.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying in general, by basing it that they came in under last year.
No.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just looking at historical data.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I got you.
They're the same one two years.
I'm not saying you are, I'm saying in general, you don't want departments spending their money at the end of the year just to spend it.
That's not what we do.
No, that's, that's why we're still increasing it by five thousand.
Yep, no, I, I understand your point, I just, when you got the historical and then you wanted to cut it.
Still an increase, just wanna bring it back a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
And my, again, my only ask, because it's a little bit of a nuanced thing, is how many of the licenses are increasing? Many of the, many licenses have escalation provisions, so.
Yeah, well, like our main one for munis, every year they go up three to five percent.
Is that, is that reflected in here, Brad?
Uh, yeah, it's part of the, uh, one of these accounts.
It's in the historical, licensing software fees, eighty-four thousand.
Yes.
So four percent would be thirty-two hundred. Right? I'm gonna stick with my motion for five thousand.
I have a quick question.
Wait, 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 I have an amended motion for seventy-five.
Oh, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw it.
You're withdrawing and coming back to your five K.
I'll go back to my five thousand. After the explanation, I'll go back to my five K.
Yeah.
I'll go back to five K.
Um, who would know this, that, for example, the really basic software licensing, is that done separately in departments? Or is there any sort of like town-wide deployment to get a better price on licensing?
Uh, it depends on, like, so the tax collector and tax assessor both use quality data. It's done together.
Right, they have specialized ones, I mean, I'm talking about Microsoft Office or something.
Yeah, that's all done globally.
All deployed, townwide.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanna know that.
Yeah, whenever we can, and whenever we can piggyback off the Board of Ed, we do, but we need to be careful, because you can't use education pricing for the town.
Right.
With like, Microsoft, because the school's a great price, because they want all the kids on Microsoft.
Sure.
We can't get that price, because they don't offer it to governments, they offered it just to schools.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All right, we have an amended motion on the floor, and we'll do it by line item.
Do, do DMAs?
So for Department one ninety, data processing, line item three one three. We would reduce that balance by five thousand dollars to an amount of two hundred thousand three twenty-nine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, intra-account? Because we gotta do the total, right? All right, so nobody's got any, any other comments, questions? All right, then, uh, the amended motion as to Department one ninety, total department, uh, will now be three hundred twenty-one thousand four twenty-two. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, done. All right, next account. The next account is fleet maintenance, two twenty. I make a motion for discussion purposes to accept Department two twenty at the Board of Selectmen recommended amount of three hundred forty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion.
For, um, was it last year that we removed the frozen mechanics position salary from salary line?
No, that, that was probably two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
So.
There used to be three, now there's only two.
So there's, these salary, the salaries here reflect, reflect how many employees, three? Two?
Two.
So a fleet manager and a mechanic?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, twenty eighteen budget reduced, um, one of the, took them from three employees to two.
Three years ago.
Yeah, it was three years ago. This is two years ago, because of budgeting out.
Parks and Rec trucks, they service the park and rec, just like they service the police.
Ask your question, Timmy Peru.
I have a question, uh, Bob, the thirty-five hundred for maintenance of parks. Doesn't Parks and Rec have a line in their budget that covers the maintenance of their vehicles and their equipment?
Uh, I think that's their lawnmower. It's called vehicle maintenance, because it's the same thing where, like, when we had all the salaries broken out, purchasing agent would flow through everything based on, but I'm pretty sure, and I could look it up, that it's mostly your lawnmower maintenance.
And can we, and I know you hate me bothering you with these questions, I just kinda want some historical, like, how much should we send, spend on maintenance of highway last year?
One second, let me. Uh, so were you talking about Parks and Rec equipment maintenance line?
It's, it's under fleet maintenance, so, so let's just.
But you, you asked about Parks and Rec's budget, right?
I just didn't know whether we had two.
No, so there's no vehicle maintenance in Parks and Rec?
Right.
So, maintenance highway, what did we spend last year?
Uh, one oh nine oh seven three.
So we're over.
Uh, this year to date, we spent ninety-three thousand of the budget of ninety-eight.
How about police, what do we spend on here?
Thirty-five oh sixty-eight, it's here.
Yeah, they're at, right at thirty-five. And this year, they're already at thirty-five.
In the budget, there's, um, oh. In the budget, there's a thirty-six thousand seven hundred for, um, equipment maintenance. And this represents a one percent increase due to recommended equipment to be purchased. So what is the equipment to be purchased, the amount? Is it that entire amount?
Can you pull up that account?
How much of an increase was it, five hundred?
The, it, the item says, uh, it's fifty-two oh six, it says thirty-six thousand seven hundred for equipment to be purchased.
We have it at thirty-six thousand.
That's what I have.
Thirty-six, seven hundred.
That's equipment maintenance, right?
Yeah, it's oils and filtering and stuff.
No, it's equipment and supplies.
So it's oil, like oils, parts, oils.
Yeah.
No, I mean, that would go into your fleet maintenance.
Maybe your oil tanks or whatever.
You, you, your, your fleet maintenance, the thirty-eight thousand two hundred in the P D covers tires, covers oil.
Brake shoes.
You know, all that, I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna have a separate line. Can you tell me what they spent in that, uh, two oh six?
Two oh six, they spent thirty-nine thousand dollars last year.
So what is, what is the, that's for tires and things, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, and the equipment maintenance.
Yeah.
It's all, it's Levine Automotive, it's Lawson Pro, it's, it's probably stuff that goes across multiple departments. If you're buying oil in bulk, you know, you're not gonna, you're not doing an oil change for the police department going, I use three gallons, let me allocate it out. You're buying two hundred and fifty gallons of oil and using it across the fleet.
But it, just in the description, it says equipment, and that's where I think the question came.
Yeah.
Then why would you have a separate line for police maintenance? I mean, police.
Because some of the maintenance is specific to police.
Oil changes?
Yeah, but it's, but you're still buying the oil in bulk. Like, we're not pro, we're not, we're not doing a job-based accounting where we just, well.
And, and, all right, so like, where I am, I purchase my own oil, and that's designated under the police budget, so maybe here, they just put it all on.
Well, it sounds like they just buy all the oil and then put it in whenever vehicle shows up and needs it. But they don't, it doesn't sound like they parse it out, so that you would know how much they.
But didn't Ed say that they, they have the fifty-gallon drums?
Yes.
And they pump it out of there when they're doing an oil change or whatever? So it follows that if they're doing a police car, they're doing a, a truck, I mean, they're just taking it out of there, and they're not allocating to either one of those departments.
Especially oil, too.
And, and the, the police department, they was talking about the synthetic oils and stuff.
Yep, yep.
That was designated for the police maintenance.
Because they hadn't gotten to the point with the new vehicles that they can buy.
Large volumes.
I'd like to move the question.
Second.
You're voting on this puppy.
All right, so. I guess with a, that was a bruh. But, uh, all right, so that means when it comes to.
Two twenty.
Yep, two twenty.
Three forty-four, five fifty.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Who's, who's?
So Nick, what's his name?
I'm nay.
Oh, Nick and Brian.
I just like weren't familiar with the equipment and supply software enough, but there carries, it's fine.
And right, we're, this is gonna be a little bit iterative, so we will go back, and if we think we've got some things, so I, maybe just take notes.
Nick, were you in there?
He's. I was good with it.
You're kind of.
Moving on to the next account, two thirty, Public Works. For purposes of discussion, I will make a motion that Department two thirty be funded at the Board of Selectmen's recommended amount of three hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. Brian, I'm, I'm sorry, just going back on the last account, do you have that note, so we'll go back around, Joe? Struggling on taking notes on all this. Yes, they.
So, so the big increase, I mean, the biggest increase here is salary for the engineer? Is that a certification step up or something, like why was that salary?
Sorry, I couldn't hear, you're asking.
It's hard to hear, uh, the people, they're all talking. You're saying there's no one in that position, but there's more money allocated.
The, uh, P U C used to pay, uh, roughly twenty thousand dollars a year of the Public Works Director's salary. Public Utilities now has a director, so Public Utilities decided last year that they no longer wanna pay part of the Public Works Director's salary.
Okay.
So it's budgeted at what the full salary was when the last person was occupying it, um, and we left this in there in the hopes of eventually hiring somebody. And as Matt spoke to the other day, uh, to the Board of Selectmen, he doesn't, eh, from the lack of interest in the job, even that salary's probably not enough money. But we didn't wanna increase it without having somebody in the job.
So the salary is actually three hundred thousand dollars?
No, that's the whole department.
So how much is that salary that, for the engineer? Because it just says director. It was like a hundred and twenty or something under, a hundred and ten?
A hundred and five, a hundred.
Yeah.
Five, a hundred.
One-ten is what's budgeted.
And that's, Brad, that's an increase from the prior, or is that?
That's, it's only an increase because the P U C's not picking up abortion anymore.
I'm sorry, and that is for the engineer or the director?
The director.
Director, thank you.
The other, uh, the other employees in that are, there's half of an admin, because Public Utilities still pays half of the Public Works admin. There's an engineer, and the highway supervisor gets charged to Public Works, which is off devil, off devil.
So, so at the end of the year, the unspent salary is, is, um, swapped to general fund, the fund balance?
Yep.
And, and what did we get last year from that, the full, the full amount?
No.
No, because there was somebody in the position last year.
For the whole, not, not the whole year, right?
Till September.
Yeah, so for all of twenty nineteen, the position was occupied. Basically, your twenty nineteen.
He, he left in September.
Yeah, but they gave him severance, so we're still paying him for the severance.
Brian.
I don't know if there's anything, I mean, obviously, I guess there's nothing we can do about it, but it seems, I understand, where the Public Utilities Commission said we don't wanna pay part of the salary, because we hired our own person. But isn't it fair to say that the Public Works Director still has to work on some of these projects? They still have ultimate responsibilities of the road, they still have an ultimate responsibility, you know.
Not for public utility purposes?
So when you guys dig up a road, the Public Works Director has no responsibility to make sure that the road is put back in proper condition or anything like that?
The Public Utilities takes care of all that. He might, he might overlook the, the plans or something like that, but he has no input on it.
You, you asked, no, refrain your question.
What I'm saying is, is that when, to say that the Public Works Director doesn't do any work for the Public Utilities, I'm just saying, it seems that, you know, we cut out what we.
He talks to them, yeah, sure, they will talk.
He still needs to review plans, he still needs to go out there and make sure that all the roads and everything are put back, it, it probably.
Regardless of what, what he does or doesn't do, why then was the Public Utilities even paying a portion of it at all?
Because prior to us hiring the other Public Utilities Director, it was a shared position.
Okay.
He did both jobs.
Okay.
And with us taking over reconstruction of the water department, water services.
Right.
We felt we need our own engineer to oversee the P U C.
Okay, so it's because they have their own guy, and then we have our own guy, okay. Still do have to.
And you, and you need a professional engineer.
I got it. Yep, I know.
I guess there's nothing we can do about it, it just seems to me like, you know.
You know, to say, maybe have conversations with one another, certainly, but he really's not doing any work for us anymore.
So, so I don't even know if this is legal or illegal, but is there a way, since there, we have no one on the horizon to take this job, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars? If you do find someone to take this job, you can come back to the Board of Finance and ask for the salary for it, can we take this out?
We hope to find someone for this job, the job is, you know, out there, uh, in the market, we're, we're currently looking for a person.
Can I, I know that question comes up a lot, come back to the board. It's hard to come back and increase an operating budget to the board, because you need to go to a town meeting.
Yeah, okay, so. Thank you.
But you could do a special appropriation that doesn't require a town meeting.
From fund balance?
Yeah.
Could you, yeah, but then you're getting into using fund balance for operations and the rating.
Brad, how much did, um, this department pay, uh, pay in contracted services last year, please?
Sixty-nine thousand. Sixty-nine, four seventy-nine.
Sixty-nine thousand.
And is that because they don't have an engineer, and they needed to sub it out for an engineer to look at?
We didn't have an engineer to begin with.
So why?
He wasn't a licensed P E, so they had to set a lot of stuff off.
So when you do get a licensed P E like you're asking for, this should, this number should be able to go down?
Depending, yeah, depending on the, the. They need to build.
Why has it gone?
It's a special item, I, I don't know, a bridge or something like that, they might have to send it out.
I'm just saying, though, in general, though, we assume that if we're requiring someone to be an engineer, that we could reduce contracted services by a little.
Maybe a little.
My question is that sixty-nine thousand was from two thousand nineteen, that's what, um, that was their, uh, amount. And then this year, they're asking for forty-five thousand, so I just wanna know why that went up and why it went down.
Uh, it's been, in twenty seventeen, it was a hundred and two thousand, twenty eighteen, it was fifty-three thousand. It's based, it's been based on needs of what current projects are going on. I, uh, spoke to the acting Public Works Director, who is the Public Utilities Director.
Yeah.
And one of the discussions, why he didn't wanna raise this account other than he rounded it, was that the town needs to do a better job of, if we're doing engineering services, that's part of a project, come to the board for money to engineer the project, so it's all part of the capital.
Okay.
In, in the past, they would go out and do twenty thousand dollars worth of engineering work to try to get a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant.
Yeah.
Uh, our conversation was, maybe it's time to start going to the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen to try to get that twenty thousand dollars, so the boards can weigh whether or not to do it.
Okay.
So what was the basis to even come in at forty-five thousand? Why, why that?
Because you still need, uh, because you're looking to hire specialized engineers when you need somebody that's specialized in that field.
For jobs that we don't know about, and it's just a.
Yes, even if you have a P E, they're not gonna be specialized in every engineering trade.
But, but, but there's no projects right now that we're contemplating that this would fall, that we would need to.
No, because any large project that you think of, in theory, now we should go and look at it to receive capital funds for it.
Right.
Is there any revenue, though, like, when we submit plans, we're charged a fee for the review, right? So the town charges us, like, our zoning permit on a new house can be two, two thousand bucks, right? And that includes for them to look at the plans, so like, on some of these projects, if the roadwork is a result of, you know, a construction project, is there any revenue on this, or is this just all lost money?
I don't believe there's much, I don't think there's anything.
I don't think there's any revenue in this, so it's pretty much just all lost, this is, they have to look at it, and that's that.
Yeah, do you wanna say what?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm having a trouble with this forty-five. It seems like it's, it's rather speculative and not well-founded, and so, you know, it could be sixty or twenty-five, you know? It doesn't, it doesn't.
It is broken down in open go, the forty-five thousand.
Yeah.
He's asking for thirty thousand for on-call engineering services.
Yeah.
Uh, the Public Works Director vehicle is in here for six thousand. Uh, on-call surveying is five thousand, stormwater testing and traffic light maintenance is four thousand.
Okay, so, but that doesn't necessarily explain what I was saying.
So it's thirty thousand, really, it's any engineer on-call.
Yes.
Wasn't that vehicle switched to the First Selectmen's office?
It was, but if we hire a Public Works Director, we're gonna need to get them.
You have one of the police cars recreating it.
There you go.
No, they're worthless, that's where it is.
Really? I think.
All right, um, anything else on this agenda?
Did, did Robert want to make a motion on that account?
I'm getting tired.
Can I just say one, is, is it safe to take the vehicle out for a lease this year?
I, 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 I moved that we take this count down by, um, ten thousand. And that's the, uh, three one three.
Okay, any, any further discussion of that?
No, let's move.
And I'm sorry, you said ten, take it down by ten?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Thirty-five.
Yep, the amended motion on the floor, eh, which has been made and seconded, is to, uh, amend Department two thirty, line item three thirteen to a total of thirty-five thousand. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they passed, we gotta do the math, oh, I'm sorry, anything else in two thirty? No, okay, we gotta do the math, so, another motion for the Department two thirty, total amount will now be three hundred forty-two thousand one seventy-one.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays, non-unanimous, all right, next account, transfer station, two forty-five. I, I stuck this in the second category, may have, could have been in the first category, but it seemed like people wanted to just think about it for a one minute, so it's in there for no, no other reason than it, it seemed to draw some unusual interest when we were going through it. You know, we talk about it every year, every week, every year, we talk about it as being a loser and a service that we provide the town. A money loser.
I've always loved the transfer station.
So anyways, uh, motion for purposes of discussion is to accept Department two forty-five transfer station at the Board of Selectmen recommended amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, uh, vote on the motion, all those in favor, please signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, done, uh, planning and zoning, two fifty. For purposes of discussion, make a motion that we accept Department two fifty at the Board of Selectmen recommended amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion.
How many, um, how many employees are there in?
Three, plus some part-timers.
Three full-time and one part-time, like, the part-timers are light officer.
I'm sorry, say it again, Brad.
There's three full-time employees.
Yep.
And there's a part-time light officer.
A light, light officer.
Light, gotcha, gotcha.
A light.
Light.
Rain in Spain.
Looks like it's. Mostly salary, huh?
Yeah, it's mostly salary, whole salary.
Any, any discussion?
Move the question?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good for that, I think everyone's good, all right, so, um, all those in favor of accepting Department two fifty, planning and zoning at the Board of Selectmen recommended amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, now move on to two sixty.
Wait, wait, one second, how many accounts do we have left?
Not many.
It's ten o'clock.
Yeah, we've got, uh, one, two, three.
Okay.
All right, um, moving on to the next account, building maintenance, two sixty. For purposes of discussion, I make a motion to accept Department two sixty, building maintenance, at the Board of Selectmen recommended about, recommended amount of eight hundred and ten thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
Could we, uh, what did they spend in contracted services last year?
Oh, contracted? Oh, contracted?
You can do whichever one you want first.
Contracted, last year was three hundred thousand, the year before was two fifty. I think a lot of that change is in part of the police station coming on.
Well, so that's the jump to three twenty five.
Uh, Bob Dibble, when he worked up his budget, he didn't know what was previously budgeted for the old police station,
but he did know that of this contracted services account, eighty thousand is for the new building. Obviously, there were contracted services for the old building, um, so he doesn't know exactly what the delta between the two is, but eighty thousand of this is the new police station.
Is that a surprise, I mean, it's, it's not a surprise to me that they made that decision. Well, I'm just saying, it's like one of those unforeseen consequences that's not necessarily explained when you're getting the funding.
Brad, could you, how much was the police department's contracted services prior to this?
I don't know, he didn't have it broken out. Uh, because it, like, the elevators, they didn't have one, but now they do, so that's an easier one to look at. But obviously, they had a cleaning contract for the old building, the new building has a cleaning contract too, it's just larger.
And that cleaning contract was like fifty thousand, wasn't it forty nine thousand or something?
I don't know offhand.
No, for the new one, oh, you know.
Yeah, I don't know offhand.
Cleaning contract, oh.
Is that information that could be found out, Brad?
It's not in, it's not in this, uh?
What the current one is, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I thought we were told it's all together, that's why, that, it's a hundred.
It is billed separately, but it is budgeted all together.
So of the one seventy four five hundred cleaning contract, it's, the, the police, uh, police station can be broken out from that one seventy four five hundred?
In the open go, it says new PD accounts for eighty thousand six hundred, all contracted.
For all contracts, yeah.
I make a motion, we reduce that by twenty five hundred.
Second.
Twenty five hundred?
Twenty five hundred, so it's not a drastic cut, and next year we'll have a much better idea, we might be able to cut more, we might say, you know, he was right on, but I don't think.
My second.
I would like to amend that to five thousand. I don't know how to do that.
You have to withdraw.
Oh.
No, she can make an amended.
Okay, should we vote on that first?
You make your amended.
Yeah, amended motion to cut.
To additional twenty five hundred dollar cut.
Yes, thank you.
Do you want?
Five thousand.
To, to, um, contracted services, by making a total of five.
Sure.
All right, so the amended, did we have a second on Cynthia's, and yes, you, Robert, you seconded it.
Robert seconded it.
Okay.
So vote on the amended, amended motion of Cynthia's of Department two sixty, uh, contracted service account three thirteen, reduce it by five thousand dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, anything else in that account?
Are you going to do the numbers?
Yeah, you will, but, uh, so, all right, nothing else, we have to do, we have to do the math, before we do the math, go do the accounts.
Yeah.
Any other account in two sixty? All right, so let's do the math, um, total amount, Department two sixty will be eight hundred five thousand four sixty two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, done. Tree warden, two seventy, for purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept the Board of Selectmen's recommended balance of one hundred thirty thousand four hundred dollars for tree warden.
Second.
Discussion.
I make a motion, we cut fifteen thousand from contracted services.
Second. Did you second that, Robert?
Yes.
All right, discussion, why, that was awful quick. I guess I was just curious why.
Seems like his mic made up.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm right, this, and I'm not challenging it, I just want to understand, Bob, Bob Dibble seemed pretty.
Sick trees around, yeah.
That was the ash conversation.
I see my mic property.
What did they spend last year?
Brad, do you know what they spent last year in, in contracted services?
Hundred and nine, five thirty five.
One oh nine.
Year before, one eighteen.
Some of that was for road construction, that, that tree work was based on road construction, correct?
Yeah, there's usually, some of this is used to, when they're doing road construction.
It's still a, you know, my feeling is that we're still raising it by fifteen thousand, you know?
Well, the, the dead trees along the roads are, aren't waiting for anybody to, uh, you know, come and cut them down, you know? There's an issue with the maple trees now, the ash trees, uh, we don't need any lawsuits like they had up in Brookfield a few years back, where a dead tree filled on, fell on a car and killed.
Seems like we're cutting them down when they're in the road lately.
Yeah.
Haven't already fallen?
You know, I, I would hope that the board would support the, the whole amount in that.
Did you look at what other towns' budgets are for tree removals?
That's hard, same roads, same trees.
Well, sometimes that's two hundred and twenty miles worth of road.
What was the number?
Twenty five.
Um, I'm sorry, I, I scanned late, I lost your number, what was your number?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen.
Someone wants to amend it to a lesser amount, they can.
I would amend it to ten and support it.
I'll accept that.
You need a second on that?
As an acceptor, you pull, you rescind yours.
I would draw mine and let his motion for town stay.
I'll second Nick's motion.
What Bob told us, oh shit, I can't remember, what was the cost, rough cost per tree?
Uh, three thousand.
Three thousand a tree, so we're talking.
But he was, he said Lewis was doing a lot, especially in the codfish area and stuff, you know, so, I mean.
I thought he said it was fifteen hundred and two thousand a day for a crew.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fifteen hundred and two thousand a day for.
Fifteen hundred per tree is whatever.
Fifteen hundred?
So ten thousand to seven trees?
I think you get more hours than that, that's just based on a little bit of knowledge in the.
What have we spent?
Hundred and nine, five thirty five.
Rich, what, what's your thoughts on this?
Well, I, I think it's a safety issue, in my personal opinion, and, you know, we all ride around and we all can see the dead trees, uh, on the side of the roads. The, the maples are now going, uh, a lot of the ash trees are already gone, but there's still some pretty big ash trees along the roads.
But if it was that big of an emergency, I mean, let's be honest, we're not going to say we're not cutting the tree.
Oh, not big of a safety issue.
He's going to prioritize, sure.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to not cut it.
Right.
No.
I mean, we're still increasing the account by twenty thousand. It was ninety, we're going to a hundred and ten, that's still a twenty thousand, that's a healthy increase.
We have to see that.
Call the question?
Ah, okay.
Hold the question.
Let's move it.
Yeah, move, move.
Move the question?
All right, all those, all those in favor of reducing, excuse me, Department two seventy, line three thirteen, reducing it by ten thousand dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right, so that's down by ten thousand, anything else in tree, warden? Now we gotta do the math, Department two seventy, total amount, uh, one twenty four hundred. All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, for, there, sorry. Uh, any discussion now, all those in favor of the total for tree warden two seventy of one hundred twenty thousand four hundred, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, okay, I think we have one more account, and that is the intra-government agency subsidies.
Four oh five.
Four oh five, yes, sorry. I'll make a motion for purposes of discussion. To accept the Board of Selectmen recommendation for Department four oh five at an amount of four hundred seventy six thousand dollars, four hundred seventy six, nine hundred and seventy one dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
Those buses cost you nearly a bunch, that's just a comment. I'm not making any motions.
Thank you for that useful comment.
Thank you, I'm just, no extra charge.
Does, does the town, you guys are going to beat me, but does the town have any say in how much the bus runs? Is it just they like just drive and they go, this is how much we use?
They just drive and.
You're, you're paying us, I mean, honest, it's an honest question.
How much does?
Well, like, the heart, the heart buses, not the heart buses.
Sweetheart.
The heart buses, eighty seven thousand eight hundred and seven.
I, I can't imagine that they're charging us for trips.
If, the sweetheart bus.
The one that goes on call, right?
Well, that's the one that's on call for, all right, all right, we'll leave that alone.
It's like putting your van in a bus.
We'll leave that one alone, the, the heart bus though, like, how do they come up with that number, is it usage or they just say, this is how many runs we're going to do and that's it?
No, according to the numbers that they gave us, they said Bethel is scheduled to receive ten point four percent of the total bus service hours in the system.
Right, that just means they drive through our town, that doesn't mean anyone gets on the bus.
I mean, this isn't, that fifty thousand is not a big increase from the year before, what was it, um, it was forty nine thousand or forty eight?
I just think it's, it's a big number, no matter what.
Anyway, no matter how you look at it.
Sounds like there's nothing we can do, but.
We can't cut it.
Well, that's the thing, that's the frustrating part of it.
Move the question.
Let's move it, Brad.
Are those in favor of accepting the amount as proposed by the Board of Selectmen of, in Department four oh five, four seventy six, nine seventy one, please signify by saying aye.
I say aye.
Opposed, none, all right, we're done with that categories one and two. Yesterday, we had asked for, just indulge everybody or indulge us for just another couple minutes, we had asked people for a walk of the Board of Ed budget. I think Brian has gotten some information from a Board of Ed member, I thought it might be helpful for us to just hear it.
Will we have copies of what we have? No, I mean.
I'll give you one copy, I'll take.
Do you want me to go make copies?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Is it hard to explain?
No, but I need to hear the square words.
Thank you.
Brad, in the meantime.
Make it three times.
I got a hundred and twenty six thousand one hundred.
I have a hundred thirty one one hundred.
All right, this means I missed the five hundred.
That's how much we've cut?
Yes.
I missed one, one thirty one what?
One hundred.
I missed the fourteen thousand.
One thirty one one hundred.
What does that bring the total increase to?
Uh, three point seven nine percent.
All right, let's, Brad, I'm sorry, let's just go through it again, so I've got Department one sixty down five thousand, Department one eighty down five thousand, Department one ninety down five thousand, Department two thirty down ten thousand.
You're going very quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's, he's getting his paper.
Professional services.
He's a young kid, I expected him to be faster, say again, Tom.
Professional services down five.
Yes.
Uh, building inspection down five.
Yeah.
Data processing down five. Public works down ten.
Yeah.
Uh, building maintenance down five.
Ah, I missed that five.
So that's our difference.
Yeah, that's where I was off, okay, so ten thousand then for tree warden in, uh, two seventy. Uh, Department three thirty, twenty six hundred.
Yes.
Department three sixty, sixty nine thousand.
Yes.
Department three eighty, ninety five hundred. Department four ten, ten thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay, that, excuse me, I'm going to. Brian, can you explain the numbers that, that you have, just so that when you see them, you know what you're talking about?
Basically, uh, the board, the superintendent of the board had found some savings prior to everything, so the actual increase, to, to, to make it, the way they explained it was that basically the board, the board itself, between the savings and everything, the increase to the superintendent's budget really came out to four hundred and four thousand of the original budget. But again, that's backing out the additional savings that they found and they have those to the left, some of the savings they have found. So, basically, the selectman cut out roughly two fifty, it almost sounds like there's another hundred fifty that would bring it back to her original request. Now, I mean, they can explain this better than I, and they may say these numbers are wrong, but from a fairly reliable source who was there, so, that's all.
It helps us be a little bit more informed going into.
Well, look, because I remember yesterday we said we had brought it back to the original request, and what I'm saying is if they found additional savings, there's another possible hundred and fifty thousand in that budget, that could be the most.
So can you, are you going to walk us through it?
Tomorrow, maybe, maybe we could just ask the superintendent to do it, right? I mean, because, so.
Did she give us to?
One of the board members did.
So they're having this discussion?
So, so, the total of four positions, the four positions they've talked about, was three hundred sixteen thousand two hundred and one dollars, right? The total benefits was eighty eight thousand, bringing the total increase to four hundred four thousand two hundred and one dollars. The reason why it only showed up as two hundred and ninety was because the, they had found savings in health benefits and some other, uh, locations. Plus, the custodian, they were going to start two months later, right? So they had stuff where they were gonna, so it's all kind of written over here, how they came up with the savings and everything. Teriyowski's so transparent, we asked for sure, that's exactly what all these numbers made us.
That's helpful. I, I really don't want to have any further discussion, just given how late it is, but does, does anyone have a, an opening question?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Well, before that, so tomorrow, I think we have only three or four accounts left, right? We have Board of Ed, operating maintenance, we'll do that last. We also have, um, Highway Department, and I believe that's it.
Employee benefits?
Yeah, employee benefits, what's that?
And miscellaneous charges and transfers.
Right, number four, okay, so.
Is it at seven tomorrow, or at six thirty?
Seven.
I'm new at this, but just, you know, the Board of Ed is a bottom line, how much discussion is, it's, you know, it's not, we can talk about different lines, right? I mean, it almost seems like a quick one.
As a conceptual matter, I, I think that's true, because we, our area, our area of expertise is finance, and we can say, look, this is what we think the town can afford, and then, you know, just say.
Then they run away with the money and, right?
But if we said that, made the case that it's like a hundred and fifty more, did get them back to the original proposal, I mean.
So they're going to have more discussion to us, proving they shouldn't be cut?
No, I mean, look, who knows?
I, I take the point, it's the biggest part of the budget, so probably, it just seems to merit some further discussion.
Because the place will be full.
So tomorrow at the end, after we've done everything, will he just make the decision, everyone will look at it tonight and see if there's anything we want to go back to, right? And then, or tomorrow, not tonight, bye, and then are we going to talk about what the revenue is?
Yes, and that, that.
Next, tomorrow night.
Right, and that's a good question, we, I believe, I believe technically, we can even do some of this Tuesday next week, if people want to think about it over the weekend.
I can't even see a different.
At our regular meeting, maybe we shift it to, uh, whatever, at that meeting on Tuesday. But yeah, my, I was thinking we hear the three or four departments tomorrow.
That one's different, that one's the one.
They will leave, we'll talk about where we are, maybe if we want to go back into some other accounts, and then we can talk rev, revenue impact on spending, impact on bill rate, and decide if we want to just conclude tomorrow night or pick it up on Tuesday. Those are the options.
Let me trade out.
Dion.
Let me trade out with you.
Dion, you're the kind of calendar expert, is there any reason we can't, if we want to extend this to Tuesday, or make our final decisions on Tuesday, at the regular meeting?
Uh, no, it would be fine, and we've got next.
Not, not suggesting we would, but knowing that if we were.
We have a, uh, we would have the regular Board of, uh, Board of Finance meeting, but we could, you know, I don't even know if you'll have anything on that agenda or not.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.